Thank you, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have just a few questions. So, you know, you've given us the budget, high end, low end of what it would cost to remediate the structure. And that's just to get it to, is it white box the right term? Basically, just get it to the point where someone could come in and then turn it into whatever they wanted? Okay. And then how would that compare to the cost to demolish it? Because we were talking in the prior public hearing about even demolishing still requires certain remediation, addressing, you know, lead paint and asbestos and whatnot. So if, if we went the opposite route, what's the price tag to, just so I can understand, like, how much additional does it cost to renovate versus just abating and demolishing?
I think we would be somewhere south of $500,000.
Okay, so an extra two to three million for the, to preserve it?
It probably could be a little less if it was a standard structure, but we're talking about a fairly surgical demolition like I had said, or as how there's some pieces of work elements.
All right. So half a million dollars to demolish the Ice House. If we add that to the $837,000 that the city of Lee Summit paid for the building and within its footprint, okay? So right there, we are at $1,337,000. The purchase price of the building plus demolishing the building. $1,337,000 if we let go of the Ice House.
Okay, now that, that's helpful. I appreciate that. And then if this were remediated, what, because I'm not a Realtor professional, what, what would a building like this, if it were in good shape at the end, what, what would it be worth? And I don't know if that's a question that you can answer, or if there's anyone on staff that can give us any kind of fair estimate just based on what commercial property and white box condition in this area goes for?
The public would probably be the best one to know.
Yeah, that's a great question and a tough one, because really the value of the building at the end of the day is going to be based on the income from the lease and the creditworthiness of that tenant. So I don't want to give you a non-answer answer, but that's really how building value is going to be derived. Taking maybe one step back, just in this whole discussion, I do want to note that as part of the selection committee, when we did an RFP for architect, GLMB came in and I think they were maybe the only one, maybe of two out of four, that, that did still show the Ice House on their plan. As a development team, design team, we took this, this analysis very seriously. You know, we looked, we relied on third-party reports, relied on preservation experts, contractors, and, you know, our hope is to go save something that's, that's historical in nature where we can. And on the other hand, we also weigh out the financial feasibility of the project. That's important when we're dealing with, you know, public dollars. And also, we want to see the city's vision come to life. So, you know, I, I just want to make it known that as a development team and a design team, you know, we went into it hoping that maybe we could salvage it. And there, because there's some authenticity in old buildings and, and in our projects at Lane 4, we've revitalized old shopping centers and there's a lot of value in that. So that was our hope. I know it's maybe beyond the question you initially asked, but I hope that provides some additional context.
Councilmember Shields, can I make him answer the question by asking an add-on question to that?
Let me try first, because if I don't get it, I'm going to definitely defer to you. So what I was just doing, very rough back-of-the-envelope math, say, the structure is about roughly 3,000 square feet through 4,000 square feet. We're talking about a $3 million price tag. That's $1,000 a square foot?
Seems about right.
If my, if my,
Yeah, I can attest to the exact square footage.
If my own calculator was right this afternoon, I, but just, just ballpark, right? I, I understand that, you know, these, I may not have the square footage exactly right. These prices may fluctuate, but it seems to me like a
Well, yes, the Ice House has a square footage of 4,000, 4,000 square feet. But if it is properly rehabilitated and the huge basement becomes viable, and also the, the second floor, that square footage can increase big time, therefore reducing the price per square foot. Now, if we take into account a huge structure such as, for example, Union Station in Kansas City, and look at what the tenants bring in, that would not be a fair comparison also, because we're looking once again at a historical building and the tenants don't bring that much money, taking into account the square footage. So that is not really the right math to do for historical building, but I respect that Hillary wants to remain realistic.
$1,000 a square foot for commercial space, that feels really high compared to what the market around here is, but I wanted someone to give kind of a professional opinion. What is a reasonable number in this area for a building in white box condition?
Sure, that's a good question. Being vacant or occupied is, you know, there's a different valuation, but let's just say it's a vacant building. You know, I think 150 to 250 bucks a foot is a reasonable number to ask. Yeah, so that's, that's a range for maybe existing buildings here. I know we have some other professionals here on, on the council who, who can maybe attest to that as well. And I'm trying to sit here and do the math for what we purchased the Wellens Building for, but I can't remember the exact square footage. I don't have that good math on, on my head, but, but I, I believe that was around 250 a foot, if I'm not mistaken.
But we could be talking four times the price just to get it into white box condition. The reason, the reason why I ask this, because you, you talked about before, looking at financial feasibility and what's doable and how it all pencils out. And that's, that's kind of what, what we're looking at at the end of the day, right? So how much you would put into it and what you would have at the end of it, and then what you could do with that, right? And that's, and that's why this is such a challenge, that, because I know we've had a lot of citizen concern, and I want, I want the public to understand that these are the kind of numbers that we're looking at and why it's a challenge at the end of the day to figure out how to make this work, even though we care about our history, is because you're looking at such a big difference between how you'd be able to market the property at the end of the day versus what it would cost us to get it there.
That's correct. And, and one other recall I'd like to add is, you know, the placement of the building, the potential tenants that go in that building, the tenants, it's our hope that what we do build there, we're going to be able to tailor that building exactly to that use and make it extremely functional. So there is some value to that as well. And we have considered as one of our options for parking, building a subsurface parking garage here, and that, the location of that building would impede it should we go that route. We're looking for the most cost-effective way to handle parking, and that's one of our current avenues potentially in pursuit.
I think those are all of my questions at the moment. Mayor, do you feel like that adequately?
You killed it. I, I
There is a little bit too much emphasis on parking. The Ice House is located right in front of the huge parking garage that belongs to the, the taxpayers and the city of Lee Summit. I believe that that parking tower is not very much utilized to its full potential. So putting another subsurface, which is underground parking garage, yes, of course, but there, there are always adjustments that can be made, you know, looking at a future parking garage and saying that, well, the historic building is in, is in the way. That historic building has been there for 126 years. Okay, so please give me a break.
I'm impressed. Commercial real estate, you're using the same language that I, that I use, so.
Okay, but I think those are all my questions. So thank you.
Well, the mayor is a real estate agent and, yes, a successful real estate, real estate agent. He has his own company and that is just wonderful. But once again, there's something that is not being taken into account, is the cost of that brand-new building that would be built in place of the Ice House. That could be up to $1.5 million. So we are looking at the purchase price of the Ice House, the demo, half million dollars, the new building, $1.5 million, and that may be conservative, you know, estimation for such a large, heavy building, two-story building with a flat roof, plus $10,000 for the display mini-museum to put some salvage artifacts from the Ice House. Right there were 2.847, $2,008,47,000. And no one is talking about the carbon footprint of demolishing the Ice House and putting a new building in its footprint. They're talking about, about mitigation. But wait a minute, what could be the CO2 footprint? I would say 300,000, 300 tons, pardon me, 300 tons for demolishing the Ice House. Let's put another 200 tons for the new building. Right there, we are at 500 tons of CO2. Wow, that is splendid.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to test your historical tax credit knowledge here. I know you said you weren't an expert on it. I do have some experience just with, in my district and where I live, with the Barnes and some of that. And I'll save some of that for the comments later as we kind of weigh what to do here. But the number you're showing here was not as a historical preservation, correct? So like the 3.4 million was to say, we're not going to register it. We wouldn't be required to restore it to historical standard. Is that correct? What I'm getting at is 3.4 million is to do all those things to it. If it was national, if it was registered as historical, we would be required to use materials from that time period, right, to end up getting those credits. So it would be much higher than this if we went that route.
Any, any materials, I'll use an example, windows and doors as an example.
Right.
The, the building would definitely need new windows and doors, and they would have to not be historical themselves, but they would have to fit the character of the era of the building.
Right, and it gets a little
A little bit more pricey, yes. And I believe that this number does accommodate some of those things in getting it to white box. You know, if you were to look at our, our, the scope of work, it's things like replacing doors and windows and, and bringing it back to essentially, you know, I think everybody here understands that in order to make, if this project was to move forward, the only way to make it remotely financially feasible from a redevelopment standpoint is to take, make use of historic tax credits. Whether that happens on this front end or whether it happens on the back end of the project for the tenant, or if it's one large project, it, it still doesn't negate the need to spend somewhere around $3 million to improve the building to get it ready.
Okay, and that was going to kind of segue, because I think, you know, it's very easy to look and say, oh, historical tax credits, we can recoup all the costs from doing this. It's not that easy, and it's post-work. So you got to spend the money first, then you have to apply, and then you have to hope that whatever it is you've done qualifies, and that's kind of a, that's not something that hap, like, you know, just get the money upfront, go, go redo it. That, am I correct on that?
That's correct. And the, the, the investment, this is also in our letter, the investment to go through that process from a consulting standpoint, it's about $12,000 just for the process to get on the national register. It's another 40, 40,000 or so just in the consulting necessary to have that preservation expert at every step of the way to make sure you are making all of those decisions in keeping with those requirements, the programs, so you have the best chance of, of success.
And then once you do that, I mean, you're, I mean, from there moving forward, that building must be kept. It's on that register, and anything that's ever done to it from there and in perpetuity has to follow those guidelines.
From the outside standpoint.
From the outside standpoint.
And, you know, their, their, Chippewa may find some determination that certain aspects of the interior need to be maintained. That's something that they will determine and they'll direct. But it doesn't necessarily mean that absolutely everything you put back in the building has to be in keeping. But those, those are, those are findings that, that you find once you can start going through the process.
And so again, just to kind of reiterate, there's no guarantee how much you would recoup back from the historical tax credit, and that would be post-work being done, plus the additional money spent to file it and go through that process and then to see what you could recoup.
That is what I understand.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's pause here. Wow, 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 wow. Mr. Lovell has some very good points here, very good questions, and of course, he's not familiar with the historic tax credits. But the response he's getting is not accurate. Those, let's go ahead and restate. Of course, the Rosen presentation is not there. I guess they were not invited. It was not part of the contract, whatever. But they would have been able to educate. So this is my job. Now, it's too late. It is too late. But the historic tax credits are 25% from the state of Missouri. Historic preservation tax credit plus another 20% from the federal government. So that makes a grand total, because we can combine state and federal. That makes a grand total of 45%. Now, 45% of, let's say, we're looking at over $1.3 million, okay? So if we took the rehab plus the listing at $40,000, plus professional fees, et cetera, it's between 1.3 and 1.4 million dollars. They would be getting back, plus all the technical support they need. Because, yes, yes, indeed, you have to come up with the money upfront, but the response you're going to get from the preservation at the state and federal level, they will tell you exactly what would qualify, what will not qualify. They will guide you through it. So you know before you even start the work, I can do this, I have to use this type of materials. And if I have any questions, I can call or write. There is an office in Jefferson City. They're extremely knowledgeable and helpful. So, you know, this is 45% back. It's a huge amount as a tax credit. And if you do not wish use the tax credit, you can sell it to one of our banks in the state of Missouri, and they will give you 90 cents to the dollar, and then you end up with cash in your hands. So very well, let's continue.
Councilmember Belker. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure that this really matters, but I'm, I'm just kind of curious why we're, it's September, we're looking at documents from April. What, what's the, why are, why has this been, why have we not talked about this before now? What's, you know, if, we, we have, I'm just looking through our notes, this is staff talks with
I don't know, that, that's a question for Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, so I'm, I'm more looking to staff, Daniel. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that's
So I think I could, I could provide a one-word answer to that question. Inflation. I think we would have been talking about a cohesive project that included private development by Lane 4 with the public improvements that we're finally moving forward on, if we hadn't hit crazy inflation earlier this year. And I will let Lane 4 talk more about how the, the inflation cycle that we're in has disrupted their planning for what might be built on the private side over there, but that's the answer.
Okay, I, I guess I'm just, you know, if, in some ways, this is a stand, it is related. I'm not to say that this is, could be integral, but just the information, I think, would have been valuable to have known several months ago. So again, I'm not, I'm not, it, it doesn't necessarily change how the analysis is going now. It just, it kind of just hit me, oh, we're looking at documents from April and we're here in September. So I'm just curious why that, that's now, now just happening.
And I think the report was delivered to the council soon after it was made available to the city. But the delay in making this presentation, having this discussion back then as opposed to now, was because we had to essentially refine the process and the sequence we're going to use. And are we going, I mean, the fundamental question that we wrestled with over the last few months is, should we continue to wait to try to come up with a public and private components project together based on the difficulty that Lane 4 is having pricing things based on inflation? Or should we go with the public improvements? And we finally decided about a month ago or so, let's go with the public improvements. And so that's why we're here tonight. And we don't know what the private components are going to be, but we circle back to the reason for that is the one-word answer I provided, which is, Lane 4 is not able to nail down to the level of certainty that they need, what the costs are going to be to move forward the private development, to wrap that into the discussion of the public improvements. And, and now it presents the additional complication that you've already heard about, which is, these numbers, under, under normal circumstances, to pre-COVID, I'll say, inflation was maybe, you know, we factor in 1% per year on our estimates, and now we're talking about 1% per month. And so I can't, I can't over emphasize the significance that inflation has had on the effects of this project and, you know, where we're at today, essentially.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I think my question might be more so more redevelopment in nature type of question, maybe for Mr. Elam or Mr. Denny. And then I might come back to you, sir. So some of the questions I had, I've already been asked, the historic preservation, the historic aspect of all this. So we have this entire redevelopment plan, which we, previous councils have approved the BLIT test. We passed the BLIT test several councils back. This council just approved 353 redevelopment plan, the budget amendment, put some of the expenses in the development agreement. So with all that in mind, keeping the historic component aside, got environmental issues on the entire redevelopment site. We know that. If we're talking about this Ice House property, and we're talking about, for a second here, talking about demolition and, and the fact that we would use this site, well, maybe not that demolition, but what's the impact? We have tons of other infrastructure issues like water and sewer. That's a huge component of this redevelopment. Should we have factored all those costs? This property, this Ice House property, where does that fit in with all this, as far as potential expense and cost down the road?
Yeah, so there is a storm sewer line. There's a, it's a brick storm sewer, about 72 inches in diameter, I believe, that kind of bisects the site. And with the, the project, we'll be rerouting that storm sewer around, around the site, so it no longer cuts through. When we get into the details of that, you know, whether the Ice House remains in place or whether the Ice House is, is demolished, it could have an impact on how that demolition and rerouting the, the storm sewer occurs. So that would be additional cost.
And that was kind of my question. So we're at, looking at additional costs besides the historic preservation. And these, these costs here that we already have in place and increases to this point since April, threatening, we're looking at more costs.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. And then back to the historic part. I know you have limited knowledge of the property itself. I know the city owns it now, but have there ever been other attempts to go through the historic preservation process or registration process?
For this project?
For this property?
For the property. I believe that some, some investigation was done and it was determined that it could be eligible. And now it's reinforced by our consultants, who was reviewing the, the project's history and the likelihood of, of preservation under, you know, listing and historic credits.
Mr. Denny, if you'd like to, what's a little bit about the history?
Yeah, Mayor Potem, I'm aware of one effort that was taken, don't recall how long ago, by Sunflower Development. I think the project was called Bloom Street Villas, but it never came to fruition.
Right, thank you, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, that's interesting that the city bought that property a while ago, and it could have done the homework of doing the application for the National Register of Historic Places. It would have been a good investment, but, well, nothing was done. They waited till the last minute. I really have a strong feeling that this trial is kind of like the trial of Joan of Arc. The Ice House is condemned ahead of the trial. They want it gone. I mean, it's really sad. It's, it is, it's a disgrace, a disservice to history and to the future generations. But we already know, my commentary is not live, of course. I'm behind making those videos with the commentary. I've been busy with all kind of, all kind of tasks. But, you know, it's really sad that we are taking for granted this historical building and the people, the forefathers, inhabitants of Lee Summit, who built it and, and operated it.
Any other questions? I was going to ask a couple of questions. What, what do you think are ways to, if we, if we went the route of demolishing versus renovating, what, what are some ways we could honor the Ice House as far as, what are the key features architecturally that you could picture us salvaging and incorporating into the new, you know, the conceptual plan that we have?
Yeah, we've actually, before we actually undertook this actual formal process and heard of some of, you know, learned of some of these requirements of the program itself, we actually were already as a design team, starting to think about, you know, it's looking like it's going to be pretty difficult to, to salvage this. What can we do? Because, you know, again, to Mr. Buck's point, we came into this project just as a, as a concept during the selection process with the hope of saving it. We thought it was a, it could be an interesting reuse, without knowing anything about the, the difficulties of the building or the financial challenges. You know, so I think it's the heavy timber. I think it's the, some of the heavy wood decking. It's the stone.
Wait a minute. You're already working inside the building, looking around, and you're already thinking about how to properly cannibalize the Ice House? That's not right. But anyway, let's listen to what you have to say, Mr. Michel.
Certainly. I think there should be a process to document it, photography and create some informational, for lack of a better term, sort of museum exhibit-type displays for the public, so that the, the memory of the structure and, and what it was is not lost on future generations. But I would love to see some of that wood and that stone and some of those other elements make its way into the project somehow. And I don't have anything, anything firm yet, but those are the, those are some of the ideas that we've, we've had. As well as, you know, we've talked about, maybe there's components of, of the project that could be renamed as the Ice House if there's a restaurant, or, you know, something along those lines, that, you know, some of these new venues and businesses might, might pay off their swell for a name.
Thank you. Any more questions, Council? We are going to go to the portion where we ask the public comment. And I think I'll, it's, it's hard to say if you're in favor or, we don't have a, an actual, an actual stance on this as of yet, but whether you're in favor of demolition or renovation, or retaining whatever, we'll just allow people to come forward. I thought maybe Ms. Smith, if you might want to start, we're going to do the public comment. If you could start us off, that'd be great. So this is the time that if you wish to speak, if you're in favor or in opposition, please come to the microphone, state your name. I'll let Ms. Smith start us off.
I'm Kathy Smith. I live at 1923 Southeast 3rd. I realize I'm in a one-man band here tonight, but I own lots of time, so I'm not bothered by it at all. But thank you for letting me come and speak in front of you tonight. So there's a quotation out there that says, "Old ideas sometimes use new buildings, but new ideas should use old buildings." The New Farmers Market is fabulous. I mean, a lot of us who were on that early Main Street board really worked hard for that. Well, we also almost lost our Farmers Market several years ago when there were a lot of cantangers, vendors that were there, and they were really hard to manage for our director. And so Stacy Brants came along and took that under control and really saved it. I mean, she really did by organizing then. So that was, I mean, that's been the beginning of, I mean, that's really a good save for our city, of course. We all love the Farmers Market. I'm asking at the council to save our, this humble building. And so things that have been saved, the sac, the sacristy at the Methodist Church, Arnold Hall, which had been relegated to by a council, former council member years ago, as being 123 Southeast 3rd, and maybe it was going to be a parking lot, but look what Andy Locke did with that site. Created a good centerpiece for our downtown and brought in a lot of folks and a lot of other investment. Another item saved, it's not, not exactly in the downtown, but it's as sure as we're talking about, 408 Southeast 3rd, Gilbert Nelson and McHugh, the Todd George home, the only craftsman style home. The only craftsman style home in the entire city. The Ice House has lots of potential, maybe an ice cream uh store for the Farmers Market. Please consider adaptive reuse of this humble building and add the word saved to the history of this building, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now Kathy Smith is like my guru, she is the head of the Historic Preservation. Lee Summit, I'm just the Vice President, so Kathy Smith is the Chair. She's extremely knowledgeable, she knows everything, pretty much everything, but the history of Lee Summit. And the important people in Lee Summit, um. The Historic Commission Preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission had a voted motion. That was delivered to the city of Lee Summit, and that was restore, reuse, and save. Okay. So have they even read about the motion, let's find out.
Yes, sir, please come.
And I think if you guys decide to tear it down, you can save the front of the building and put it up in part of the design. I was working on that project with Truman Hospital, I mean, with General Hospital, they saved the front of that hospital, put it up, and it looked real nice after that was done.
Right, very good, thank you, sir.
Now, this gentleman is Yerry Keschner, and he is a member, a valued member of the Historic Preservation Commission. He is a very smart guy, and his his attendance is remarkable. He's always there making good comments and and working and helping out. Uh, well, his comment is realistic, you know, if we lose the Ice House. Can we at least save the facade? That would be a good thing to do, are they gonna listen to him? So he's already leaning towards, well, it looks like they're gonna demolish it, so let's try to see if we can save the facade. And uh there would be a brand-new building behind it.
Hello, my name is is Brandon Darty, and I'm born here in Lee Summit, I'm a couple of blocks away from here. Um. It. For this house, the Ice House was built in eighteen ninety-six, basically, it's almost about a hundred years before I was born. Um, I've seen this Ice House throughout, whole time of life, and it's important that we keep. Historic uh as a landmark, and it has a lot of history and. Behind it as well, but in but after so many years, it's been at least about over fifty-plus years, it's been really neglected, so. It once it gets all fixed and and everything, it's gonna look really awesome. But I was wondering, uh, since it's been. Really sturdy and everything, can we still be able to please kind of. Save it, restore it, repurpose as a key building part of the the plaza and. For the market, so um, so we can keep the history in our Lee Summit. Uh. So people can understand what it's like in a hundred years ago, so, because. We want to be a part of the rest of the country. Demolishing history, we can actually can save it like they do in Europe. And hopefully, everything will be good with that, save that building, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please come board.
Brandon is a member of the Save the Eighteen Ninety-Six Ice House in Lee Summit, and he was born and raised in Lee Summit, he lives. On Green Street in Lee Summit, just a few blocks away.
My name is Julie Mabry, I live at two three oh four Southeast Rancen Road in Summit. Um, I ran the Ice House auction for five years, starting in two thousand fourteen, and it became a very vibrant place, it was asset to the city, it's proven that. It produced a lot of revenue uh for the city, thousands of people went to the Ice House, and they were awestruck by the structure itself, fascinated by the history. I think taking a piece of property like that and tearing it down is doing a disservice to the citizens of Lee Summit and to the citizens of Missouri. Because there's an incredible amount of history, it was built in eighteen ninety-six, it supported the growth of Lee Summit. And initially, when it was built, it was a slaughterhouse, and it, lots of people that lived around here, they relied on the Ice House. To bring their cattle and through the through the Ice House, their products were sold, and it helped to support many, many families. It it is a significant building, I know there's a lot of costs involved in restoring it, it's a hundred and twenty-six years old at this point. And I mean, anything that's a hundred and twenty-six years old has been neglected as it has. It's going to require some love and attention, and I do believe that with that uh effort and the money spent. Um, to restore this building, I think that our city is going to be better for it, I think we're going to be admired for the fact that. We stayed saved a historic site instead of tearing one down, because I don't believe that that's a really admirable thing to do. Is tear down something as important as that, it doesn't serve a purpose right now, but it will. I mean, I lived it, I know what it's like, I know how people felt about the Ice House, it was an emotional thing for them. We talk about embracing Friday night events, movies and so forth, every Friday night, we conducted a auction there. And lots and lots of people came there, there was always questions about uh what the Ice House was, its history, we had some photographs, or very few. But the ones that we did have, did have, we shared with the people that were there, and they loved, they loved the fact that we had some history. On the on the building itself, I believe that it's important that we respect the history of Lee Summit. And to restore that building, because it is historic, even though it wasn't ever put on the register, doesn't make it any less of an important structure. And spending the money to restore it and make it part of our community, I think is very, very important, and I hope you consider that. Thank you, thank you.
Now, that was a beautiful speech, Mrs. Mabry, uh, former business person, uh, who did operate. The Ice House Auction, um, with her husband, and unfortunately, they had to stop. Running the business because of of uh of personal issues that they had, um. But they 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 had done a wonderful job, and tonight, Mrs. Mabry did a great, great job speaking up. Uh, in favor of the Ice House and its significance, thank you very, very much, Mrs. Mabry.
Good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Dave Eames, I'm a local business owner, a very proud resident of downtown Lee Summit. Um, you know, I love old stuff, I I bought old houses, uh, we bought old buildings that we have businesses in. I mean, heck, I even bought an old truck, uh, that I drive around town in. Now, most of those decisions were made uh from an economic point of view, and I didn't make those alone, my wife and I were partners in that decision. Maybe the truck had a little more heart in in its purchase, but uh the buildings, you know, we bought those because we knew. We could run a business in there, and we could raise our family and potentially have a nice investment there. And I think that's the challenge with where we're looking tonight with this uh with this property. And I remember the Ice House Auction, we used to go there Friday nights, it was a really fun time. But I think, you know, in a in a place like this, when you see these numbers on here, in terms of the the cost to. Bring that building just up to a point where a business person like myself might have a chance to open something in there, it's still so far away. So I understand the challenge tonight, I'm making that decision, you know, I'm in agreement, if if there's a way to save uh pieces of the building and and work that into the project, that's always a really interesting thing to do. It's a design challenge I would love to have. And secondly, you know, we're coming up on nine and a half years uh since the bond issue passed in two thousand thirteen to get something done, and I know we want to do this.
Okay, let me say something, nine point half years since the bond issue passed, but uh Mr. David Eames. And the other persons listening to me tonight, do you have knowledge that the city changed the location? The original place that was approved by the voters in Lee Summit nine and a half years ago was behind the museum, okay? In that area that was vacant, and then the city changed its mind. And decided to change the location to uh Green Street, straight across from City Hall, because there was possibly more room available. But they did not seek voter approval, so this is a little bit annoying, this is a little bit annoying that there was such a big change. And um. Most most residents of Lee Summit who voted in favor of that bond issue are not even aware of that. And many of them are not, most of them perhaps are not aware that back into the nineteen nineties. When the city of Lee Summit wanted to um relocate its city hall to uh Green Street, and there was a huge. Uh, project of demolishing those buildings like Burton Motors, et cetera. Um, what happened was that the Historic Preservation back then, and Mary Barnes was the um. The Chair, uh, she made a speech in favor of preserving the Ice House, because we thought, well, what are they gonna do, are they gonna close Green Street? Are they gonna demolish some of those buildings, and no, no, she was reassured by the uh city of Lee Summit's task force back then that. The Ice House will remain untouched, now they're going back, and the Ice House is once again under attack.
Right, and I know that we want to do this properly, but there comes a point in time that if we continue to delay a project like this. For for a variety of reasons, it just you start to lose hope as a voter and as a resident that something will not get done. And I think we're so close, and tonight was a big step forward uh in getting this project, getting the uh the ground broken. And getting things built over there, so I hope you consider that too, I just, we're we're at a point now, nine and a half years in. With a building that's going to cost a ton of money to fix up, it's time to kind of move forward to this next step, but this is a really exciting and dynamic project for our city, of which. I'm crazily excited about, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go to Zoom unless there's anybody else in the room that would like to speak. Okay.
Now, this is me, I was in Bordeaux, France, visiting with my mother, who's ninety, but I really wanted to attend a meeting remotely. Uh, when the meeting started, it was one AM Bordeaux time, and with when it ended was like three thirty AM. Uh Bordeaux French time, but I really wanted to, because we were told that the Historic Preservation, that the meeting. Uh, regarding the fate of the Ice House would be taking place in November. So we thought, we had all this time to do this and that and prepare and get more signatures, but no, it was moved forward.
We're gonna go to Zoom? Mr. Signet de Corbe?
Good evening, everyone, it is a pleasure to uh to be with you tonight, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, wonderful. As a matter of fact, I'm in Bordeaux in France, I'm staying with my mother, and it is close to four AM, but. Uh, to me, it is a very important thing that I be with you tonight and talk about what's going on with the Ice House. Kathy Smith, as you just heard her, she's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and she made it. She she expressed several important things. Um, I'm also the Vice President of the Historic Preservation Commission, but um, there are just a few things that I want to emphasize. The first thing is that uh there is a group that has been founded, and it is called the Save the Eighteen Ninety-Six Ice House in Lee Summit. And this has been a grassroots campaign to provide awareness to the citizens and also to city officials and. Um, and the councilors and the mayor. Um, so we founded this group, and we gathered over two hundred signatures. And we gathered them through a website that is reputable, and it is. They're not charging us anything, that is why 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 we did it, so tonight, we have the uh the honor of turning in. Those uh those signatures that are in favor of saving the Ice House. So the petition is being turned in, but there are other things I wanted to mention real quick. Um, we were told that this meeting would be taking place in November. And we thought we had a lot of time to gather more signatures or to put together a formal presentation by the Historic Preservation. And emphasize the history, but I guess we kind of, we had to rush, we're down to the wire, and. Uh, we had to wrap things up in just several days, for me, it was it was a little bit hard, because I'm spending time with my mother here in Bordeaux, France, who's ninety, and. She's she's been seeing me on the laptop and placing calls and gathering information. And then I want to thank two persons with City Council, the first one is Mia Priors, and she's the one who kind of waved the red flag, and she said. Michel, all those emails that you've been sending with your group since April, we're not getting them, where are they? Well, they all went to the spam folder, so I want to assure you all, this is not a last-minute effort. We started back in April, we gathered a lot of information, pictures, history materials, thoughts, then financial thoughts about the Ice House. But only in the past few days, you have been able to receive them, because they were going straight to the spam folder. And then there's another thing I wanted to emphasize is that um. As a former banker, I want to say something important. An equation has been presented to us tonight by some uh by these presenters that have a lot of respect for. For them, and and they came up with dollar figures, but as a former banker myself, there's something I noticed, is that. Uh, if you look at any of those artist renditions, there would be a new building within the actual footprint of the Ice House. And this has not been taken into account into the presentation tonight. Those buildings are not falling from the sky for free, they represent dollar amounts, so. On those artist renditions, when I see a three-story building, a fairly large building. That would be placed in the very footprint of the Ice House. If the Ice House is properly restored and put into um. Into work as a commercial uh. Building, there would not be the need for those buildings, so the the cost of building those new buildings should be subtracted. From the from the equation, and this is something I wanted to point out, because when anyone thinks about demolishing a building. We're thinking possibly it's gonna be like lawn, it's gonna be a parking lot. Just like the nineteen oh five Missouri Pacific Station, back in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, there was a motion to get that building raised to make a parking lot. Thank the goodness the city of Lee Summit had the great idea of negotiating the price and getting it at a good price, and now it's the Chamber of Commerce. So the building was repurposed, saved, but in in the in the situation of the Ice House. We are not demolishing the Ice House to have a parking lot, and not a building would be placed there, and that's something I wanted to emphasize.
All right, thank you, sir.
I thank you all for your time, and I hope that I've been able to convince some of you, some of you. some of you here this evening, that before we bulldoze history, we need to do some thinking. And it may be that if we demolish this, this building in not a very large amount of time, uh, some of the newer generations, why in the world have they done that? Why have they taken away this great building? Which is one of the oldest buildings in Lee's Summit. It's very unique, it's coarse limestone and also, believe it or not, for many, many years, it was the largest building in downtown Lee's Summit. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you again. Okay? Okay, uh...
All right, after I spoke via Zoom, I, I was still hoping that, uh, the building could be saved. I had no clue of what was gonna happen. I was still hopeful. I was still hopeful and, uh, I really appreciate the mayor giving me some extra time. Well, I guess I was allowed to, uh, ten minutes because I am the, um, I am the leader of a group, I was representing a group. Uh, I didn't get a chance to emphasize that, uh, the carbon footprint of demolishing the Ice House plus putting a new large building in its place could have been about five hundred tons of CO2. And, uh, the greenest buildings are the one that are already built. But, um, I was hoping that the mayor, who is a real estate professional and, uh, some of these, uh, council members would say, "Hey, well, that's right, that's right. Uh, we didn't factor in the cost of the new building. So the equation is not correct. Those numbers are not accurate." But no one said anything. Check this out. They are not, it's like I'm talking to break war.
Again, in-person audience, one last chance, anybody? All right, very good. I'm gonna move then to the next part of the public hearing. Sorry. Which is, uh, just simply to ask the council if you have further questions for staff or the applicant? Or actually, this, we are the applicant somewhat. Okay. Mister Bushak, any further comment? Uh, no, I don't think so. No, I think so, Mitchell, any further comment? Okay, thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm gonna close the public hearing and reopen the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna take Mayor Fratims Lopez's, uh, stand for a second. Let me just thank everyone who's come out tonight. Um, thank you to staff and the developer and the public for all, um, sharing this information and your views. Um, I know there's been a lot of public engagement on this because it is something that we all really care about, this, um, development, our history. And I think that, um, it was important that we have this discussion publicly and really think through the, our options, the costs, um, and what we can do to make this feasible. I think that, um, one of the public comments that I heard this evening really kind of put a finger on it, that this has been in prog- in process for almost a decade and I really don't want to see anything that's going to get in the way of finally making progress, um, on this, on this project. Um, and anything that would make it financially and feasible to complete this project. Um, and when I look at those numbers, it's, it's easy to say, why don't we just fix it up? But, but I look at, we're stewards of taxpayer money and I have a hard time explaining to my neighbors, my constituents, why they should pay three million dollars to restore this structure that the city is never gonna see that kind of value out of. Not to mention that the, just, just the historical review could tack on another six months or nine months to even get started on that. So, while I appreciate the public concern, I think, I think there is a good middle ground that we can chart that's kind of been brought up by, um, the developer, by the mayor, by other, other folks tonight, that I think there are ways that we can preserve some elements of this building in terms of, um, recupusing, reusing the wood, the stone, documenting it, uh, photographically, doing some kind of an exhibit in the new development. I think there's gonna be a lot of solid support that we can, we can honor that history, save some of that history incorporated into what we're going to do going forward, but not have to have our taxpayers footing the bill for the structure and not have to delay this project that has been, um, really, really long anticipated for the city. So I think because of the cost, because of the timeline, um, I think there, there, it, to me, it makes sense to take that middle route of preserving the story, but not necessarily the building. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Hillary, that's a very, very nice speech. Um, the only thing is that the numbers are not accurate. So, um, I came up with a total of two million eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for, uh, demolishing and replacing the Ice House with a brand-new building. Now, what would have been the cost of restoring the Ice House with the tax credits of forty-five thousand, forty-five percent of the purchase price? Well, less than a million dollars, I calculate about eight hundred, about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Why? Because we have not just the forty-five percent tax credit of one point three hundred and fifty, one, one point, one million point three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, plus the work that could be done in-house by Park and Rex. Uh, they have been bragging about the great work and the significant savings to the city of Lee's Summit and the taxpayers when they build the Amtrak shed and the, um, uh, the restroom, uh, in-house building. They could have done some work, maybe fifty thousand dollars of work in-house. And, uh, Park and Rex came up with this memo that's been sent to, um, to people and they are talking about volunteer work. They're talking about a large amount of hours, uh, provided by volunteers and that results in significant savings. And, well, there could have been also volunteers, uh, properly trained and help, you know, the Ice House with some basic carpentry, um, painting, tuck pointing, et cetera. Would have volunteered to do some tuck pointing because I know how to do that. Could have trained others. That could have been another twenty thousand dollars saved and the city can provide a, um, basically, uh, the city of Lee's Summit can cancel the local sales taxes on about ten percent of the, um, cost of materials, um, for this price tag, that's six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So basically, for a little bit less than a million dollars with the tax credit, of course, there's a delay. Now, if you wanted to do it without the tax credit, it would have been, um, about two million, two hundred thousand dollars, or just around that figure because, because there are just so many ways to save on here and there before inflation. I didn't factor inflation. So, uh, my, my final figure of two point two million dollars restoring the Ice House without the tax credits, uh, compared to demolishing the building, I'm still under. And we would save about, uh, three hundred, maybe four hundred tons of CO2. But anyway, this is on my, my, my math and apparently they don't like it because they all, you know, they're, they're better at math than I am, I guess.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I like, Councilmember Shields made some, some great points there, especially from the, from the economics of it. And, you know, I would just, um, I would say that I think the, the city does not take these decisions lightly and I think we've done a good job in the past where we can make historic preservations work when they do pencil and when they, when they do work financially. We've done a good job, big good stewards of, of protecting some of those buildings, but that also means there's gonna be times when we have to make difficult decisions like this one. And, you know, as Councilmember Shields, uh, just mentioned, it's, you know, the, the cost for that small of a footprint to renovate it with taxpayer dollars versus what you could get for that dollar amount to build something great, I still think there's a way to honor it. And I would just, you know, again, and I kind of mentioned this earlier, but, um, you know, I live in New Longview and, um, went through a lot to preserve, um, those structures. And I would say two out of the four have worked out. And now we sit there with those barns and they've been put on the historic register, there's been money that's allocated to them, but what can we do with them? What is financially feasible for someone to come in and do? And I don't want to see us put ourselves in a position, especially at the heart of the city, the downtown, and the momentum we have and some of the great old structures that we have preserved and are still using, like the church, um, like the bank building that's being done right on the corner right there. That's the eighteen hundred building. So, um, I just think this, in this particular instance, there is a way to honor the design and create some remembrance of what that building is, but to push us forward and, and get this development, um, going as we have been waiting for so long to, to get it moving forward. So, anyway, I'm in the support of the disposition of the Ice House. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, another person, another council person, uh, against, uh, restoring and repurposing the building, well, I don't know what to say. If numbers that are inaccurate are, are being presented to the city council, it's hard to make a decision. I am, I'm pretty sure that many of you already made up your minds, um, against saving the Ice House. But at this point, with those inaccurate dollar figures that have been injected into your minds, um, there is not much hope. And we know that, uh, at this point before the vote, uh, there is, um, Phillips, Phyllis Edson, who is not present tonight. And there is a, 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 another council person who has not spoken. And, uh, Faith Hodge, I believe. Um, but it's, it's already lost cause. Even though, even though, uh, sir, even though we know that this Ice House has been in service for over a hundred and twenty-two years of its life. And it was severely neglected maintenance-wise. I don't see why it could not have been repurposed into something great. Let's go ahead and, uh, view the conclusion.
Councilmember Pride?
Thank you, Mayor. Personally, I love seeing history, um, preserved and honored. But in this case, it's just really hard to justify the cost, um, for the project in order to preserve the building. I do like incorporating pieces of, of the building, um, in the new development. And I like what, um, Hillary said, to preserve the story, but you don't necessarily have to preserve the building. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I had faith in Mia and I also had faith in Hillary. Um, these, uh, two ladies are the councillors of District One, where I do reside. And it is also the relocation of the Ice House. Like most historic district, uh, buildings, most historic buildings are located in District One. District One is the old part of town. But, um, very disappointed, uh, you are letting us down. Very, very disappointed.
All right, then I'm gonna move to, uh, the reading of the, uh, the ordinance. Councilmember Focker, you wanna help us since there's two options? And I'm, I'm assuming you kind of got the same feeling I did or consensus that was, uh, that you...
Oh, yeah, but there is still one more thing.
No, Mi- no, Mister Signet Decorbe, no, that's, we've closed the public hearing. I gave you twice the amount of time I gave everyone else. I appreciate, I know this is very hard. Let me, let me just say, this is not easy for us because we, we have struggled with this. We want, I think everybody up here wants to save this building.
No.
Um, but there comes a point where it crosses over a threshold when it comes to the cost that, um, you, you, you can't justify. I mean, the, this, this cost is how much it costs, um, the Independence, um, city of Independence to build their entire farmer's market.
Okay, Mister Mayor, I have a lot of respect for you. You're a very educated, intelligent man, a successful business person, but you know the numbers. You know the numbers and some inaccurate figures were thrown to you and you, you did not react. Okay, so I guess you were ready to kick the, uh, kick the Ice House, you wanted it out of your way because it, you know, it's just, it's not right. It's not right. The math is not, it doesn't sound accurate, those figures.
That's, that's how much money we're talking about here. So, we went to the public hearing and I will say this, since I didn't say anything earlier, let me tell you something. This land was purchased over three years ago. Conceptuals presented within six months, or actually before we purchased it. Further, we took it to the next level. Many, many more conceptuals were developed out, showing the Ice House with, or the conceptual site plan with the Ice House and without. That was well over two years ago. There was no rush on this. There was no push, uh, to just, you know, slam this through. If anything, we've been deliberate, we've taken our time, you see the time, the, the expenses that have gone through. The, we have given this, on the due diligence side, full consideration and now we have to make a decision. And I'm sorry that if, if it's gonna upset some people, I do appreciate, as Councilmember Shield said...